I appreciate that. Anything ever go for voting to get started? Before we start our council meeting this evening, we have two different public hearings that need to take place. The first public hearing is for ordinance 2022-16. This is approving the plan of operation and governance for the NOPEC natural gas aggregation program for the purpose of jointly establishing and implementing a gas aggregation program as a NOPEC member. With us here tonight are our two representatives from NOPEC. Jose Delgado is a relationship manager and Charles Raymer is the director of relationship with NOPEC. So at this time, gentlemen, if you could come on up to the podium here and make any comments that you need to make, and then council can ask any questions.
Well, good evening, Mayor Gallagher, council, public here. My name is Jose Delgado, as you mentioned, relationship manager with NOPEC. And with me this evening is our director of relationship management, Charles Raymer. And essentially, what I'm here to be able to fill any questions regarding the gas opt-in program we have with NOPEC. And essentially, what it does is allow enhances our customer experience, allows those residents or small businesses who wish to join a NOPEC irrigation, which you already have established here, it streamlines that process for them, makes that experience a little more pleasing when they call our customer care to do that. Shortens that time period from what could be potentially two months to just send through a phone call. So with that said, any questions from council? Be happy to address those.
Pretty familiar with the program. Very happy with it.
Yeah, I figured you were just allowed the opportunity, one, to introduce myself here now and be able to fill any questions. If there aren't any questions, then I guess that will be it for this evening.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Don't go too far, because we have another one here for the next ordinance. Right, so at this time, that public hearing is concluded. We'll now have a public hearing for ordinance 2022-17, authorizing all actions necessary to establish an opt-in natural gas program pursuant to section 4929.27A1 of the Ohio Revised Code jointly through NOPEC as a NOPEC member. And again, Jose and Charles are both here. You don't have to get back up again unless there's any questions on this one. All right, any questions from council?
Maybe they could just give a brief overview of the opt-in program so that the residents will know what we're talking about.
Right.
Yeah, so since about 2002, I believe it was, Brooklyn has been part of the NOPEC gas aggregation, and it allows you to join aggregation when an opportunity presents itself that you wish to be able to have that as your natural gas aggregation. That process, as it stands today, for you to call into our customer care takes about two-month period, and it's just the process as it is yesterday. This amendment, what it does is allows you to streamline that process again from two to up to two months, potentially, I guess, yeah, two, three months to essentially that phone call. So that improves your experience with NOPEC, allows you just to be able to have a better customer experience when you call in to our customer care center to have that switch from your current status with your energy supplier to join a NOPEC aggregation. Is that any questions from the public regarding that?
Yeah, do.
Yes.
Do you question, I mean, do you coordinate that with the, with the person, the people have, you know, for another company that's trying to switch to NOPEC? Because there's always a problem there. Months go by, and it's not just your end, it's, well, you have to call them, and then they'll say, no, you gotta talk to them. How does that, you coordinate that together to try to get to that switch?
Yeah, so I'm going to rephrase the question. Essentially, what happens, does NOPEC, I guess, collaborate with the utility or your current supplier when you're managing those, the switch from one aggregation to another, one supplier to NOPEC aggregation? So the way that works is essentially, when you call into NOPEC, we would know whether or not you're with a supplier or not. If you're with the supplier, you would have to terminate that contract with them, and then, once that's completed, that process is completed, we will then get a notification from the utility letting us know that you're able to join. If you're not with the supplier, and you're with the utility, it's a matter of calling into NOPEC, and we can work with you on that and understanding what your situation is to switch over to aggregation. So that's about as much of the coordination that happens, but we would be notified when you are able to join aggregation, you're eligible to join aggregation.
May I ask a question? Are you going to be sending anything out to residents that are going to explain anything to them?
Yeah, we could absolutely work with you and understand what's the best mode, whether it be through social media, your website. We have marketing content we can share with you, you could post on your website to say what the program is and what the benefits are.
Thank you.
I realize it's a lot of information, or it's information that's new, nothing else, and allows people to have the opportunity to digest that, what that means for them.
This is a question you may not be able to answer, but, you know, right now, natural gas prices and electric prices are going through the roof. Where does, where does the NOPEC aggregation kind of compare to what else is on the market right now? I know electric is kind of is booting everybody off, you know, because the other utility rates are lower, or seemingly right now. Where's the gas falling with that?
Yeah, so right now, our gas rate is 12% less than the SCO. So the SCO is what the utility, in this case Dominion Energy, offers to the residents. So there's benefit there by being able to do that. If you wanted to do that again by passing this amendment, this gas opt-in that allows you to do that, streamline that process, and you can do it essentially with that phone call, assuming that you are eligible to join aggregation.
When you say 12% lower, is that with, like, the utility that everyone's automatically on if they don't sign up with somebody else, or the market as a whole right now?
Yeah, so the SCO is a default program. In this case, if you're not with the supplier with the aggregation, you default to the, like I said, in this case, your utility is Dominion Energy.
Okay.
I believe, yeah.
What's your current gas rate?
Right now, our gas rate for our standard program, which is what everyone defaults to, is 7.8 per MCF. Which, again, relative to the SCO, which is 8.86, I believe it is. Yeah.
When I go on apples-to-apples to look at the different rates for both utilities, electric and gas, I see all these companies listed, but I never see NOPEC on that listing. Is there a reason?
Yeah, so the question was on apples-to-apples, why isn't NOPEC listed there? The apples-to-apples website, otherwise known as Energy Choice Ohio, is, are listed for suppliers who are for-profit. NOPEC is a nonprofit. Any other questions?
You said that the gas is, I think it's at 12% plus, I remember the exact number you gave, it was 12% lower. On the energy side, percentage-wise, how much over other companies are, I mean, is it a wash? I mean, you know?
Yeah, so compared to the SCO, to the default program, is what residents would have, is 12%. Relative to other suppliers, it was brought up, you can go to apples-to-apples, yeah, there's a number of different offers out there. I'm sure I have specific numbers on that, but you can do, you can definitely search on there, on apples-to-apples, and look for rates.
I always, you're not on there.
No, right, you can go to our website and find our rates on our website. And you can actually even just, I'm your relationship manager, you can call me, I can, we can handle, we can discuss this. But always be, always do your due diligence when you're on apples-to-apples and be aware of terms and conditions of the suppliers when it comes to rates. But as far as percentage, higher or lower, there's a lot of different rates out there, and, yeah.
I'm just looking for a ballpark number, I'm not going to pull you to it. I mean, you can shoot with the 12-point whatever for the same, I figured you'd have a ballpark number.
My name is Charles Raymer, I'm the director of relationship management. If you go on apples-to-apples today on their website, I think that there are 88 different offers, and they range from introductory offers of like $5 or $6, up to like $12 or $14 per MCF. The average, if you take all 88, the average is about $9.08. So we're 20% less than the average. Now, recognize that those low prices are usually special introductory offers, and some of them also have large early termination fees. NOPEC does not have an early termination fee, and we don't have special introductory offers. So to answer your question, our price, $7.08, is about 20% less than the average of all those 88 offers. Does that answer the question?
That was for gas, or you're talking?
That's for, yeah, that's for natural gas.
Yeah, I just saw electric, but that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council or public?
Well, thank you for the information. Appreciate that. As with everything else, you make sure you do your homework and do what's best for your family, but we appreciate the offer being out there. Thank you so much.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to go ahead and call the, or that, now that public hearing is now concluded. This time, I'd like to call the meeting of the Brooklyn City Council to order. Mayor Joe, can you please call the roll? Thank you, gentlemen, for coming in.
Aaron Barowski.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Sue Grodek.
Here.
Ron Van Kirk.
Here.
Meg Ryan-Shackey.
Here.
Andy Selhertz.
Here.
Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Please be seated at this time. I'll turn it over to councilor Pucci for this evening's opening.
This evening, I have a prayer for the anniversary of 9/11, and it was written by Brother Daryl Burns, who's a Jesuit. Holy God, Creator of all people and all nations, it is with sorrow and apprehension we remember the tragic events that occurred on this day. We lift to you in prayer all those who died in the Twin Towers, at the Pentagon, and on United Airlines Flight 93. We entrust them to your loving care, console their families, friends, and all who mourn this loss, in the hope that all who trust in you find peace and rest in your kingdom. We pray for those who courageously responded to provide aid and comfort to the afflicted. May their painful memories of that day be healed and transformed into strength and positive resolution. We also pray for ourselves as we seek your strength and guidance. We live in the aftermath of this tragedy and under the shadow of future acts of aggression. We stand in need of your assistance. Enable us, dear God, to put an end to fear by resolving to live lives that are based on respect for one another, by resolving to abide in a peaceful manner and never settle disagreements in our lives in a violent way, by resolving not to fall into the trap of blaming entire ethnic groups, races, or religions in response to actions of hostility, by resolving that justice, not revenge, prevail in our world. Let us resolve that in the face of hatred, we will show love, that in times of despair, we will be voices of hope and creators of new dreams, that in times of darkness, we will be sources of light. Let us resolve that we never regard forgiveness as weakness, but rather as a source of strength in our lives and in our world, and let us honor the memory of nearly 3,000 individuals who died on September 11, 2001, by resolving with your help, Almighty God, to truly live this way so you may be glorified and your love made known to others through us. Amen. And I also want to add that over 3,000 first responders have passed away since 9/11 from illnesses that resulted from ground-zero exposure, so we also need to keep those and their families in our prayers as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. God. Appreciate that. Very well done. All right, this time, I'd like to invite Jake Altman from the Honor of States office to the podium, and he has a presentation he'd like to make to Mr. Raguz and the Brooklyn Finance Team. So, Mr. Raguz and your team, if you could come on up to the podium as well? Oh, yes. Oh, his team is Celeste Muspol and Cindy Simcox, so I didn't mean to leave their names out as well there.
Mary Jo, ex-officio, members.
Yeah, there you go.
Hi there. My name is Jake Altman. I'm honored to be here. I'll be F Auditor of State Keith Faber to present the city of Brooklyn with the Auditor of State Award with Distinction. I think this is probably the third time I've been out here to, and I've only been with the office for three years, so that's a very good sign for the city. And it puts you, this award puts you in the top echelon of communities across the state and of governmental entities across the state. The top, it ranges from about 3% to 5% given the year, so really in the top level, and it speaks to Mr. Raguz and his team, and of course, the mayor and council, and all of you here for holding them accountable. This is a community that really, really cares deeply about fiscal responsibility, and so congratulations.
Thank you. Great job as always. We appreciate that very much. At this time, the mayor has a proclamation that she would like to present, so I'll turn it over to her.
Congratulations again, Tom, Cindy, Celeste. They all work hard all year long, and they do a great job, and I can't ask for a better finance team. I'd like to, everyone, to welcome Karen Fratto up here. Karen, if you want to come up here with your family, if you'd like, whoever you want, whoever you would like to join you. Well, Karen, she started here in Brooklyn in November 18, 2014, and she was promoted shortly after to the coordinator on March 14, 2016. Unfortunately, she decided to retire this September 3. She's been instrumental in the ongoing success of our senior community center, always helping seniors and providing a fun atmosphere, entertainment, and of course, safety. She's shown her love for the seniors of our community through her numerous dances and luncheons, her fabulous prize baskets, which if you've ever seen, oh, she does a terrific job, and helped with the elderly and food distributions. And that was even more vital during the COVID process, where both her and Kathy were taking special trips, making sure that all the seniors had groceries when they couldn't get out or were afraid to get out. Karen always worked the best she could to make everyone happy, continued to learn new programs, try new events, and implement new activities for all who came in the center. She's made such a positive impact on so many people, and her legacy will continue to shine.
Well, this is a bittersweet moment for me. You know, my husband did suffer a stroke in January, and so it's just time for me to be home with him, and so I am retiring. It's a little bittersweet moment, but I want to thank Mayor Gallagher, who gave me this opportunity to run the senior center. It was an honor and a privilege, and the last eight years is probably my favorite job ever. I worked 18 years in the market research, for a market research firm, and coming to the city was just a breath of fresh air. Working with the seniors, who I love dearly, was wonderful. All of the directors, I want to thank each and every one of you for being so kind to me. Whenever I called any of them, they were there, and Mayor Gallagher, of course. My colleagues, all of the employees at the city who donated time to me, I have to say that they donated four months of time to me so that I could be with my husband and try and figure things out, and that's just something that I can never thank you enough for. Kathy Mazzari is here, she's my right-hand person over there. I love you dearly, Kathy, and I know you'll continue with the seniors. They're in good hands, and I just want to thank you all. And to the citizens of Brooklyn, all the seniors, you're in good hands here. You have a great center and a great city, so I won't be gone. I'm still a resident of Brooklyn, so you'll see me. I'll try to come up to some of the dances and still be a part if I can. And again, I thank you all for this great opportunity, and mayor, thanks so much. Council, gosh, all the council. Ron, especially thank you for taking us on the bus with your, did much of that. Oh, gosh, I don't want to leave anybody out, but all of the directors, all council, all of the city staff, the finance staff, who's worked great with me, Kevin Butler, Olive Milkey, Tom, gosh, okay, John, Kevin. I love you all. All right, I'm going to be quiet now, we're going to get a picture.
Congratulations. Tom, when you try to head in here, you got to see if I can hide.
And mom, my mother, my niece, my uncle.
The whole family.
Yeah, the whole family's here, everyone.
Thank you so much, Karen. You will definitely want to stay.
Congratulations.
We will not blame you if you want to leave as well.
Well, you know, I think we're going to go.
Take care.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we'll now move on with the other items on our agenda this evening. The first item is our approval of minutes. We had two meetings. The last one is, the first meeting was our last regularly scheduled meeting of June 27, 2022. Any comments or questions on that? Make a motion that we adopt?
Second.
Or to approve, sorry. Yeah, we're not adopting anything.
To approve the minutes of June 27, Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodek.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan-Shackey.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
All right, and next is the special meeting that we had on July 13, which was, that was the Zoom meeting, is that correct? All right, just, just one item is that Andy is not on here, but he's in here. So as just for presence, I'll just make a motion that we, he just got here before the meeting.
We have you recognized as well. Where it says that I entered the meeting, it was due to technical difficulties, because I was in initially and then got bumped out, so if we could just note that.
You would think after all this time, we'd be able to, we wouldn't have any technical difficulties at all, every time with those Zoom meetings, but, all right, it was very brief. I think it was the shortest meeting we've ever had. Any comments or questions on, regarding those minutes? All right, I'll make a motion that we approve as amended.
Second. To approve the minutes of July 13 as amended, Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodek.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan-Shackey.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
All right, this time, we'll have the public session. If anyone on the audit committee says for the good and well for the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address, and you'll be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or fewer.
I have something else to say after this, so this is, this is their time, so I have Josiah and Gideon Trank here with me. Their mom reached out to me. If anybody knows, they, they love our safety forces, and they wanted to get some cards together to show their appreciation for the fire department, police department. So we got these cards, they circulated them, we took them up to the school. We know that the safety forces, first responder jobs are thankless at times, and it's kind of hard and it's grind. So these are signed by members of the community and a bunch of kids at the school, and the Tranks, and they just want to present each one of you. So if you'd go to each one of the chiefs, you're over there, you're right here.
Thanks, buddy. Look at these, holy cow. Where's your name?
So if you would share those with all the officers and firefighters, we appreciate it.
We've got a spot for this. We'll definitely put it up. You have no idea where you put your name? There you go.
Thanks, guys. Thank you, guys. Keep coming back up here for a second. Can you come on back, back up here, and chief, Paul, and chief? Okay, you grab your card and get a picture real quick with the chiefs, and then we'll move on. Oh, you're going to take it right here again? Oh, good. You can't talk behind him. Okay, so there you go. Tom, up here again.
Get friendly with Kate.
Good high line, Tom. All right, thank you.
Prop slavery 6600, Visser's Drive. May here as a private citizen to speak about the school. Brooklyn City Schools has increased in our academic achievement in scores in 19 of the 20 performance indicators on this year's state school report card, receiving a three-star rating. The school district achieved the highest rating of five stars for the graduation rate of this year's state report card. 98.2% of our seniors graduated on time. The district earned the highest rating of five stars in gap closure on this year's state report card. This is a measure that shows how well the students close the learning gap from one year to the next. The district has invested over $1 million in capital improvements projects throughout the district since 2020. Each student has their own Chromebook. Hurricane Alley's been repaved, the track has been replaced, several doors are being replaced on the high school, and we are currently installing safety upgrades throughout the district, among many other projects. I mention these things to display that the school is moving in the right direction, and is a place we can all be proud of. As some are aware, the school has a levy, issue four on the ballot on November 8. This is a renewal levy, your taxes will not go up. The school has always been lucky to have such strong support from the community. This levy is important to the district, and it represents a large percentage of the budget. Please consider supporting this issue four. Please vote yes on issue four for the schools. You can help in the following ways. You can follow, like, or share the levy Facebook page, and it's @supportbrooklynschools. Brooklyn City Schools. Please spread the word about the upcoming spaghetti dinner on Saturday, September 17, from 4 to 7 at the high school cafeteria. Donations are being accepted by the Support Our School Levy Committee. You can attend a literature drop on Saturday, October 15, or Saturday, October 29, at 10:00 a.m. at the board office, school board office. You can stand at a polling location on Election Day, Tuesday, November 8, and hold a sign and thank people for voting. Key times needed are 6:30 a.m. to 11 a.m., and 1 p.m. to 5:30 p.m. You can attend the Levy Informational Finance Forum Night event on Tuesday, September 27, at Brooklyn High School at 6 p.m. I will end this with repeating that this is a renewal and not a new tax. Your taxes will not go up. Please vote yes on issue four. And I ask each council member and mayor if they will publicly support this levy. Please answer that question during your comments. Thank you.
Bob Hennings, 4643 Winter Lane, Brooklyn, Ohio. I don't have something as nice as elaborate as that card or cheap, but I do want to thank the Brooklyn Police Department for helping me out in a big way over the summer. I, I signed a contract with the contractor to have my driveway done, and he came up with every excuse to not come and do it. And I thought, I just lost close to $3,000 as the down payment, and didn't even have any fireworks to blow off with it, so geez. So I made a report out, I told the guy I was going to make the report out, and he didn't seem to let it faze him one bit. I came up here, made a, made a report with Officer Coachman. About three hours later, he called me back, he goes, you have no idea how many people this guy owes. He goes, we have enough, enough information here to actually put a warrant out for his arrest. So that's what he did. They put a warrant out for him. Officer Glendorf found a phone number on him, called him, told him what they were doing. About four days later, I had my money back, so I was, I'm grateful for that. I thought that money was history, so I just want to come up and say thank you to the police department that they got my money back. I appreciate it.
Expect a bigger return.
Next week, I'll.
Kelly Crawl, 10523 Manoa Avenue. I am speaking tonight on my own behalf as a private citizen of Brooklyn.
I am speaking tonight on my own behalf as a private citizen of Brooklyn. About 17 and a half years ago, I moved to Brooklyn from Fairview. I chose Brooklyn because it was a small town. Housing was affordable for a single mom. My job was in Brooklyn as I worked for Hugo Boss back then. Taxes were considerably considerably low, and I liked the schools. They had all day kindergarten. I planted my roots here, and I plan on staying, thanks in part to the zoning conversation. And going forward, I want to be more informed, more involved, and understand what's happening in my city. Which brings me to my question. What does the city consider an emergency? On June 27, Mr. Barowski requested an amendment to section 721.03 of the Brooklyn Codified Ordinances, removing the noise restrictions on ice cream trucks, allowing them to play music, therefore allowing them back on Brooklyn streets. This was declared an emergency. 11 weeks later, and no one has seen an ice cream truck. And I don't have anything against ice cream trucks. I could have used one the weekend I worked in the yard. It was over 100 degrees, and I was too tired to go to Dairy Queen. All jokes aside, I'm just curious why this was an emergency. Was it due to the timing of the council break? Was it on behalf of a local establishment that wanted to expand their business? And if it was, why did not they not take advantage of this emergency vote? What was the purpose and reasoning behind what I will call Ice Cream Gate? I would think that Mr. Barowski would want to turn his attention to more serious matters like safety and consider those an emergency. On July 30, 2021, Mr. Barowski stated, "My opinion when it comes to the uptick in violence and crime in and around our city leads to these suggestions. Safety over zoning, hiring more officers, and patrols in strategic locations." I have been coming to these meetings for almost a year now, and not one word on safety. To be completely honest, and through no fault of our safety forces, I think you do an amazing job. I am not comfortable, not as comfortable walking around Brooklyn as I used to be. I don't like going to Ridge Park Square alone. The police are constantly being called to the same stores in the North Plaza for fights or theft. There have been recent reports of men following women while they walk their dogs, asking if they can take their picture. Not to mention the car thefts and break-ins. What will it take for you to make safety a priority? It was brought to your attention that you have not kept your campaign promise of holding summer meetings. That same week, you started walking the neighborhoods of Brooklyn under the guise of speaking with residents, but really you were dropping literature for fellow politicians. You stated that you'd be at various community events available to speak with residents. At the picnic in the park, we watched you walk right by a Brooklyn tent with at least eight residents working, no acknowledgement or introduction, and instead you had a 20 minute conversation with the ice cream truck driver. You said you wanted to be held accountable, Mr. Barowski. So again, I ask you, what will it take for you to make Brooklyn a priority?
Good evening, everyone. Victor Ardito, 7439 Outlook Avenue. It may have been explained, but I caught something about they're not going to do the one rear parking lot or something at the new new city hall. Is that due to a financial thing? Is it going to be something that's going to be done done down the road? Because like Kevin had brought up, and that that parking is a scarcity there at times. And thanks again for the Biden administration and everything for what they've done to us. We're enjoying the hell out of it. Thank you.
Anyone else have a say for the good and well for the city? Sorry, Mr. Blum, didn't see you get up here.
Earl Blom, 4724 Sides Drive. I didn't plan on saying anything, but I want to further encourage people to support the schools. I've been a resident here for 56 years. I came because we had good schools. The good schools here in Brooklyn gave my children, my two boys, the strong educational foundation that they needed to continue in life. They're doing well today. The most important asset we have in Brooklyn is our children, and we owe them the best educational opportunities that we can give them. So I encourage everyone here to support the levy, the renewal levy that comes this November. Let's keep our educational excellence going and continuing. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, well, I'll move on with reports of committees, commissions, and boards. We'll begin with the committee of the whole that met at 6:15 this evening and had a rather lengthy agenda, so I will move through this as quickly as I can. We did have three notifications from grants that were issued recently, the first of which was a $750,000 ARPA grant that was received from the county. This has to do with the COVID funds from Cuyahoga County, and those funds will be poured into the city center, reducing the overall cost there. Next was $181,471 grant from the State of Ohio Violent Crime Reduction Grant Program for the Police Department. And these funds will be used by the Police Department for extra policing during busier hours as well as at retail locations for the chief. We talked about that in the meeting. Lastly, was a grant for $675.25 that was awarded from the State of Ohio for fire department medical equipment, and this is actually from seatbelt fines, annual seatbelt fines. And the chief said this will be used to purchase some portable oxygen tanks for the fire department. Ordinance 2022-16 and 2022-17, both of these ordinances are on third reading and adoption this evening, and these ordinances deal with what the gentlemen from Dopek were here, Mr. Delgado and Mr. Raymer, allowing us to continue in those programs. Resolution 2022-28 is on first reading, but we hope to pass by suspension of the rules. And this is to extend the moratorium on the processing of applications and permits for small box discount stores. This is a resolution that was originally passed at the it was passed at the beginning of this year, and this is this we intend on continuing this moratorium until the zoning code is rewritten, when we have more clarifications on how these stores will be handled going forward. Resolution 2022-29, this establishes actually an updated fee for lien certification related to parcels with the city of Brooklyn. As Mr. Butler explained, this we're getting a lot of requests from different entities in regards to assessments and liens that are on city property for potential buyers or refinancing. And right now, the fee is $5. It's good dates all the way back to the 60s, I believe. And this will increase that fee to $25 for the first hour and then $25 of any additional work per hour after that. Next is Resolution 2022-30. This is a housekeeping item. This requests the county fiscal officer to advance the proceeds from the 2022 tax levies to the city of Brooklyn. Resolution 2022-31, establishing a donation box impound fee. A council passed an ordinance earlier this year in regards to donation boxes being placed throughout the city. And if these donation boxes are placed there without the permitting process by the city, the city impounds them, and this will charge a fee of $17 per day until those boxes are picked up by the owner. Resolution 2022-32, again, a housekeeping item, accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission for tax levies and certified number of the county fiscal officer. Resolution 2022-33, this is approving and adopting the county's 2022 to 2027 All Hazards Mitigation Plan. This is a plan that's put together with our two chiefs, along with a couple of other cities around us with the county in regards to mitigating all kinds of different hazards that can occur around the city. And so this plan is used by the county to help direct funds when it comes to mitigating things after they happen, so that's on first reading. Resolution 2022-34, this authorizes the mayor to pay the 2023 wages wages in accordance with the wage reopener language for Ask Me Ohio, AFL-CIO Local 3218. This is a 3% increase, and it has a me too clause. If other unions receive a higher increase, then that this one would default to that, but it is a 3% right now. Resolution 2022-35, this is an agreement with the K Company. We have a part at the Recreation Center ice rink, a dehumidification unit that needs to be replaced. It's $50,820.85. We are currently up and running, but we're kind of living along. This part is needed to make the repairs permanent. Well, as permanent as repairs can be. Resolution 2022-36, this is approving construction budget and authorize the execution of the guarantee of a price amendment. This is for the city center project. Mr. Nody was here with us from GPD to give us an update on the city center project. It is moving along as scheduled. We are about two weeks behind the overall schedule due to the inability to get certain items for the city center project, but other than that, things are progressing. There were some slight increases and some slight decreases as far as the costs go. Overall, there's an increase of about $46,000 due to some miller work that has to be done as well as some change in some hardware for security purposes for doors. But beyond that, we also received $750,000 ARPA funding that's going to go to offset those and many more, with hopefully some more to come when it comes to the tearing down specifically of this building, and that'll be determined here in the future. Next is ordinance 2022-24. This is providing the update for the providing for the compensation for the part time and full time administrative employees in the city of Brooklyn. This is a restructuring of the city center and the recreation center. And the mayor, I'm sure, will explain more of this as we move forward or this evening, since this is on request by suspension of the rules, but council did recommend that this change be made. Ordinance 2022-25 is on first reading. This amended amends section 1501.03 regards to fire safety inspectors. This is just to bring language that is currently outdated up to more current language with Ohio Revised Code. And then lastly, is ordinance 2022-26. This is to provide for the property and casualty insurance for the city for the upcoming year, starting September 25 of 2022. That cost is $164,441. This is an increase of $22,000, and this is due to an industry wide increases in losses due to cyber security, not for Brooklyn, but just overall. And it also increases in underwriting property and also increases in insurable value due to labor shortages and, of course, that wonderful thing that we're all experiencing inflation. Right? So that's a $22,000 increase over last year. So there was a rather lengthy agenda this evening that the committee of the whole meeting does take place at 6:15 prior to the start of all council meetings. All are welcome to attend. We'll now move on with Recreation Board, Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. Brooklyn's Fall Festival will be held on Saturday, September 24 from noon until 5:00 p.m. at Veterans Memorial Park. There will be lots of fun activities, including music, crafts, face painting, food, popcorn, balloon, balloon animals, games, and more. Recreation Center will be offering fall swimming lessons for kids. Lessons will be offered on Saturdays as follows. Levels 1, 2, and 3 at 9 a.m. to 10 a.m. Levels 1, 2, and 4 at 9:30 a.m. Levels 1, 2, 5, and 6 at 10:30 a.m. Residents $35, partnership $40, nonresidents $45. Registration starts September 12. Classes are six weeks, starting Saturday, September 24. Brooklyn youth basketball for grades 3 through 6 will run from November through March. November 22 through March 23. There will be an eight game regular season plus playoffs, 1 through 2 weekly practices. One to two weekly practices. Practices and home games will be held at Brooklyn Middle School Fieldhouse. Practices begin the week of November 7 and games in January 2023. Coaches will manage teams, and parents will be contacted in November by their assigned coach. If anyone is interested to volunteer coach, let them know at registration. Away games to be held at Middleburg Heights, Brook Park, North Olmsted, North Ridgeville, Columbia Station, Fairview Park, Westlake, and Stones. Registration September 15 through October 15 at www.brooklynrec.com. Residents STM and HCA students $60. The next Recreation Board meeting will be held on Monday, September 19, in the Rec Center Meeting Room, 7 p.m. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky. Next up is our Planning Commission, Councilman Groth.
Thank you. The planning commission went three times over the summer. On July 6, a request for one pole sign for One American Road was approved. A request for a sign for Progressive at One American Road was approved. A request for a sign package from the city of Brooklyn was approved. A request for the final site plan approval for Well Now Urges Center at 4630 Ridge Road with approved contingent on the city engineer's approval. And a request for a lot split at 464630 Ridge Road was also approved. There was a very short special meeting on July 13. We are the planning commission approved a request for an updated sign package for the BW3 at 5020 Tiedemann Road. On August 3, there was a request at the August 3 meeting, there was a request for a sign for choice cabinets at 4770 Ridge Road, and that was approved. There was no meeting in September. There were no applicants to applications to review. Our next meeting will be October 5 at 6 o'clock. And I just would like to remind everyone that tomorrow there will be another open house at the senior center, September 13, 6:30 to 8 o'clock. It is our chance to review the final draft of the zoning updates. The meet the the open house will be held in the same format that the previous ones have been. Our consulting company will be there, and residents will have the opportunity to ask questions about any of the updates. Currently, this is the last open house that is planned. And I think that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is our school board liaison, Councilman Pucci.
Thank you. Good evening. Mr. Slattery actually mentioned most of the items, especially though the great news about the school report card. Thank you all to the schools for your efforts. The next meeting of the school board is September 20 at 6 p.m. in room 173 at the high school, and that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to reports of council to begin this evening with Mr. Barowski.
Thank you, Council President. These, first of all, everybody, welcome back to council, citizens and council, mayor, chiefs. So these past two months, the city's been alive with quite a few wonderful events, such as two separate fireworks displays put on by the city and also the Cleveland Baptist Church, the movies and concerts in the park, and the picnic in the park, which was fantastic. The summer was full of laughter and joy at Memphis Kitty Park, which ends the summer season this weekend. And just yesterday, I was honored to have hosted a community style 9/11 memorial event that our own mayor, Katie Gallagher, and state senator Matt Boland graciously spoke at as we remembered that tragic day. I'd like to also publicly thank Mr. Rob Hennings, which is in the building, for helping out with the event, and also Liz and Erica Dragney for the assistance as well. And I'd also like to say congratulations to all of those that were recognized for their accomplishments this evening. To the questions that I was asked, safety is the number one priority for everybody in this building, be it the police chief, be it the fire chief, Ms. Pucci, all the way to Mr. Tansky. I speak regularly. Even the other day, I ran into Chief Malkey at the gym the other day, and I spent about half an hour talking to him about the Westbrooks. And what could we possibly do about that? As well as the speeding around and on Ridge Road when it comes to the construction. And I know that I have bothered, to his delight, Fire Chief Paul many times when it comes to safety, even when it comes to elevators that aren't operating properly in our local apartment complexes. So yes, I may not readily speak of safety when I'm in this room, but when I'm outside of it, that is my number one goal. I'm diligent, working along with the chief, both chiefs, the mayor and this council, to ensure that our citizens are living in a safe city. When it comes to the ice cream legislation, I had spoken with Mr. Butler and the mayor and the chiefs about getting this pushed through kind of quickly because of the timing with summer. I wanted to give ice cream companies the chance to come in and operate to their fullest in the city. And yes, I did speak with the ice cream gentleman at the picnic in the park on how to go to city hall, get the permits, meet the requirements to operate safely in the city. And the reason I pushed so hard for this is because I had residents reach out to me about this opportunity for ice cream companies. about this opportunity for ice cream companies. They are friends that own their own ice cream businesses, and I wanted to do the best I could to bring those businesses into this city and provide them an opportunity to succeed. If I'm wrong for doing that, then I'm wrong, but I don't think so. I'm about creating jobs and also being safe. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Borowski. Next up, Mr. Tansky.
Good evening. I hope all the residents had a nice summer and welcome back. It was, it was great seeing a lot of friendly faces throughout the summer, enjoying the outdoors and all the fun activities in our community. We look forward to start the fall season and the completion of our Brooklyn's new city center. That will include City Hall, police station, and council chamber. I would like to congratulate Karen Fredo on her hard work for the city and a very happy retirement. Also like to congratulate the finance department and the staff on your recent award. And just one other thing, the two students up here, Josiah and Gideon, and I thank Mr. Slattery for bringing up them and recognizing them. They work very hard on raising funds to our safety forces. They're out there in the heat all day long, and I give them a lot of credit. When you can spend your day not out playing and you're out in that driveway selling to whoever comes down the street and our safety forces do show up, whether it be Brooklyn, there's a lot of Cleveland officers that showed up too. I give them great respect. I couldn't say more on how young they are to do what they're doing because it's, it's just amazing to see youth out there, especially raising money on, on forces that we all, that we all use and enjoy. That concludes my report.
Yes, sir. Next up, Mrs. Grodick.
Thank you. First, I would like to say that, yes, as a resident, as a council member, as somebody who is a very proud mom of two Brooklyn graduates, I would support issue four. It is a renewal. I can't imagine a day that I wouldn't support our schools. I'll start with that. Next, I would like to say that this is welcoming week. It runs from September 9th through 18th. I will admit I had never heard of welcoming week until I received something in our, my mail this week and then a follow-up email. But welcoming week seems to be very timely for me professionally. Welcoming week is nationally celebrated. It's an annual event that brings together neighbors of all backgrounds to build strong connections that affirm the importance of welcoming and being inclusive in achieving collective prosperity. Our community, many of us know, is one of the top-ranked communities in Ohio to foreign-born residents. Our schools continually welcome students who come from homes where another language is primarily spoken. In my own classroom this year, I have 18 students, and including English, we speak five languages. Out of my 18 students, five of them speak Nepali at home. Two of them are new to our school district this fall. Our little Brooklyn is a global community, and I'm very proud that the mayor, Meg Shaki, and some of the other residents in this school are joining together to make sure that the different cultures in our community and the families that are, that celebrate those cultures feel very welcomed. As summer winds down, I also would like to thank the recreation department, especially for the fun-filled community events. I hope everyone was able to get out to enjoy things that felt a little bit more normal this year, something that was fun for you, something that fit into your schedule. I'd also like to thank the service department for keeping our city spaces, the streets, and our tree lawns repaired, safe, and clean. Lastly, I also would like to congratulate the finance department on your newest award and wish Karen Fredo the very best in the next chapter of her life. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Slattery.
Oh, I just. Sorry. I did it to the mayor a while back, so it's okay.
Thank you, Sue. Mrs. Raja. Sorry about that.
It's okay. Welcome back, everyone. It feels so good to be back. Summer felt short, but it's about how it goes, so it's okay. I hope everyone had a fun, relaxing summer, spending quality time with friends, family, and our community right here in Brooklyn. It was so fun to have many of our summer events back, as everyone has mentioned before me. I really enjoyed talking with residents and meeting some new residents at the events I was able to make it out to this summer. If you haven't made it out yet, there are still many ways to engage with your community here in Brooklyn, including the final concert in the park this Wednesday, Fall Fest, and our high school sports activities going on this fall. I encourage you to get involved. Speaking of community and to answer Mr. Slattery's question, as always, I do support the school levy. I believe schools are one of the most important foundations to a community and to a city, and even those like myself who do not have children attending the schools. If you can afford it, please vote yes on the school levy this November. Community cleanups through Keep Brooklyn Beautiful continued all summer long. I want to thank the volunteers who have come out to the cleanup so far, as these would not be successful without each of you. With the seven, I'm sorry, seven cleanups complete, we've had 43 volunteers pick up 51 bags of trash this summer. If you haven't been out yet, I do encourage you to use a cleanup as an excuse to get involved with Brooklyn. We have three more cleanups this summer, the next one being this Sunday, September 18th. We'll meet at 7575 North Cliff, it's the medical building behind Texas Roadhouse. We meet at 9:00, and we'll clean up along North Cliff Ridge and a little bit of Idlewood. Hope to see you there. And finally, yesterday was Patriots' Day, and Councilman Borowski organized a great ceremony to honor and reflect on the events of September 11th, 2001. Mayor Gallagher, as, as he mentioned, and state senator Dolan both spoke about the unity that was felt through our entire country on September 11th and the days that followed the attack. I cannot help but think of how meaningful and important that message is today, as the division of people from national politics all the way down to the local level is high. I think the message of unity and being proud to be an American and proud to be part of this country and community is important for all of us to reflect on. I want to thank Erin again for putting together yesterday's event. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Slattery.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you to Karen Fredo for all her efforts at the senior center. Sincerely wish her the best with her retirement. Thank you to Mr. Raguz for his staff and their work achievements and just continued success. Hopefully more rewards on the wall.
That's the plan.
That's the plan. Sounds good. There are going to be two more fresh fruit and produce giveaways over at St. Elias, scheduled for the fourth Tuesday of each month. They are September 27th and October 25th. They start at 3:30 PM. Please do not arrive too early. I'd like to thank Mr. Abruzzi and the mayor on working on a community grant application from Cubada that was through Keep America Beautiful. It was really well-written, and if awarded, we would have used the money for some of the upgrades in Brooklyn Memorial Park. There were four $100,000 regional winners with the best, one of those four getting additional $100,000. We worked one of them, but it would have been nice, but seeing all the winners that did, that they did have for the regions, they're all very well-deserving. The Brooklyn schools, as you've heard, having their school, support our schools spaghetti dinner this Saturday from 4:00 to 7:00 at the high school cafeteria. Tickets of $10 can be purchased at high school main office or at the board office. There'll be entertainment, 50/50s, raffles, baskets. Definitely support the schools. That's definitely not an issue you can argue against, so it's a yes or a no. The Friends at the Brooklyn Library also this weekend will be holding a used book sale this coming Saturday and Sunday at the Brooklyn branch of the Kauhara County Library on Ridge Road by Hurricane Alley. There'll be a members-only preview sale on Saturday from 9:00 to 11:00. The sale to the public will be from 11:00 to 5:00, and then Sunday, there will be a bag sale starting at 1:00 PM. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Pucci.
Thank you. I also agree that it seemed like the summer went by very quickly. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Raguz and his team, Mrs. Simko and Ms. Westfall on their award. I appreciate all of your efforts and everything they do for the city. Congratulations to Mrs. Fredo on her retirement. I would like to sincerely thank her for the wonderful job that she did as our senior center coordinator. She genuinely cared about our seniors and their well-being, and this love and care that she had for them really shined through in everything she did. I wish her a happy, healthy, and very long retirement. Also, I'd like to give a shout-out to Mrs. Misery, who has been filling in and doing a really wonderful job at the senior center. And thanks to our city employees who donated sick time to Mrs. Fredo so that she was able to cure for her husband. Regarding issue four, the renewal, I will say, yes, I am in favor, and I would encourage all residents to support issue four. This is a renewal, no new taxes, no increase, and we all know how important a good school system is to a community. So it's very important that people get out and support issue four. And just from a couple of the speakers, Mrs. Crawl, I can tell you the reason I supported the emergency measure on the ice cream truck, you know, them being able to play the music, was a timing issue. And that was because that was our last regularly scheduled meeting prior to the summer break of our regular meetings. So to me, it made sense that since this is the season, that we would enact that legislation. Mrs. Grodick already mentioned the zoning open house tomorrow. We are coming to the end of this planning process. I would encourage anyone who has any interest or any questions to please attend. We've had numerous open houses, and unfortunately, they haven't been well-attended. The last few, it's pretty much the same people who are coming. So, you know, this has been a long process. So any questions or, you know, just to come out and see, you know, where we are in the process and what the proposed changes are, please come to the open house. It is 6:30 to 8:00 in the senior center. Finally, I would like to thank Josiah and Gideon Tranque for all of their efforts in showing our safety forces just how much they are appreciated in our community. For those of you who don't know, they have this, on a regular basis, a lemonade stand and various other fundraising things they do, and then they take all of the money and use it to show appreciation to our police firefighters, including, I think this is the second year they've been able to pay for a food truck to come and provide lunch to our safety forces. So I'd like to suggest that we either have a resolution of council or a proclamation honoring these two young men for their efforts. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to be redundant, but welcome back. Hope everyone had a blessed summer. The events that happened around the city were great this year. I got, first for me was to be able to be involved in the baseball program here in the city. My son is eight years old and was able to, I was able to coach him and 10 other little Brooklyn 8U boys and girls at the city, and Jack and his team do a great job making sure the fields are ready to go. You know, the kids really had a great time and got to meet a lot of wonderful residents in our city. And so kudos to the rec department for all the programming that they do. This is really my first personal experience having a child in the, in the program, and it was wonderful. He's already talking about next year, so he really enjoyed it. Also, thanks to Josiah and Gideon. It's great to see young people involved, as already been mentioned. At our, our church yesterday, we had a service that we honored the first responders, and we actually had the Cleveland Hopkins Airport Fire Department that came, and they have the coolest new truck that I've, I've never seen before. The wheels are like very tall than I am for this thing, and it was great to come out, and my boys loved it. And the Brooklyn, both the Brooklyn Fire Department and the police have been out to our school this year to talk to, I believe, to our summer elementary students. And so it's just great to see that the youth involved with the safety forces, and as always, you guys do a great job. I know it's already been said, and Karen's not here anymore, but Karen is truly a very, very kind person, and I've, I've worked with her quite a bit over the last several years with the senior center. She will be sorely missed, and I, I kind of try to find a better word to describe her, but just kind is probably the best one that I can. She truly is a loving person, and she will definitely be missed. Her priority is obviously with her husband right now, and that's to be commended as well. And so she will be missed, and so Karen, if you watch this at a later time, you'll definitely be missed. Tom, I know you hate recognition, but it is well-deserved. The top 3% of the city when it comes, and the state when it comes to finances is a pretty admirable thing, as well as your team, so congratulations on that. All right, with that, I will turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Venker. Tom, I won't tell council your nickname from the other directors.
I take it as a compliment.
Yes. So a few updates. Council covered a lot of this stuff, so I have a lot of X's on my paper, so bear with me as I try to figure out, I repeat everything I need to. I mentioned the open house tomorrow for zoning, for this week for zoning. There's also an open house for the Kingdom Trail for those residents on, especially Brookway who are interested. That is September 21st at 6:30 at the senior community center. I know there were some questions on that, so we'll have some images and get any questions covered for that particular trail. That is the trail that we received state capital money for, about $150,000 to help with that. A newsletter should be dropping pretty soon, in the next week or so, so you'll get a lot of these updates in here. But we have a new app that we're releasing. It's a C-click Fix. The directors have been training on that, especially Service Department, Building Department, who get most of the complaints. This app will allow residents, it's a free app to download, they can take an image, they don't have to have an image, they could just input whatever the issue is without the city. They'll post that, and they can track in real time what the city's doing and when we fulfill the request. So we thought it would, you know, be a good starting point for residents going through the website. They can actually monitor, you know, what their complaint is or what their issue is and, and show the follow-up from the city. And then you can also see if someone else put the request in, so it avoids duplication as well. So we're hoping that that works out, and that will launch at the end of this month. So you'll see some social media pushes for that, newsletter pushes coming soon. Over the summer, we had a bunch of businesses open, Firehouse Subs, Crumble Cookie, Five Guys, Progressive Insurance has just started moving in, it's getting a long haul, according to them, I talked to them today. Their equipment that they're waiting for is sometimes scheduled out till next November. So that is how long the delay is in certain things with people doing building repairs or just equipment with our economy right now. But they are moving, it's a huge move, they're moving people from Colorado Springs to data copy center. So that campus, One American Way, is almost entirely full. It's good news for the city, so we're happy about that. And of course, the Amazon built and is opened up. I asked Tracy Strobel, the executive director, for a library update, and so I just want to cover this. They're closing in on schematic design for the library that's going to replace this building once it's demoed. They said, of course, I've already announced this, but it's 25,000 square feet, with the entrance and parking on the south side facing the existing park. There will be a drive-up window on the east side, an outdoor gathering space and programming space on the west side. Inside, they will include an innovation center, a maker space, a student success center, a GD Pearson View testing center, a technology classroom, six group study rooms, flexible meeting spaces for up to 100 attendees, a cozy adult reading area with a fireplace, and much more. So we're closing in on getting some of those schematic designs, and I'll be happy to be able to show those when they are ready. The one piece of legislation on here that Ron asked me to cover was the change to the compensation, which is, the particular ordinance that's included on was really a law director pick, but the, the context is with Karen retiring, we're restructuring, no longer filling the senior director position, but instead filling a position that is like that in the aspect of making sure all of our responsibilities are covered, but everything under the umbrella of the Recreation Commissioner. This is really a best practice you see in a lot of other communities, as you see our budgeting, leisure time activities includes both senior and rec. And our programming, we want to make sure it's fluid and that we are making sure that we're covering everything that all types of levels of seniors want, whether you're 50, 60, 70, or you're want athletic things, or you want more of a, you know, playing bingo type of thing, making sure that we have it under all. Making sure that we have it under all umbrella, and there's a little bit more oversight to that. So we're excited about this. This does not have to be on suspension. I know, I asked Mary Jo, and she just said nobody told me. So if you guys want to wait a meeting, I'm totally fine with that as well. And then Ron asked me to give a trail update. We have a pre-construction meeting on the trails tomorrow. And so Dan Gerson, our city engineer, says he expects that the trail work in Memorial Park is to start next week, but he will give a more defined schedule to me tomorrow after the pre-construction meeting. I also want to thank Meg, Andy, and Aaron. I know you guys were out all summer doing cleanouts with a lot of other residents that helped you and students getting their volunteer time. Really want to thank you. The service director in the Building Department, Patrick Lang, could attest, you know, litter is, we just can't stop it. I mean, some of the businesses have been terrible this year, and they've incited numerous times. Even that, just people throw stuff out the windows. I can send the Service Department to clean up tree lawns, and an hour later, there'll be stuff out there. So I really encourage you to, if you see something, if you see someone doing it, just ask them to stop. I know, you know, we can't really do anything unless a police officer witnesses to give some kind of ticket out. But it's just really, you know, keeping the city clean is important. It's the image of the city, but really holding people accountable, holding our kids accountable for the environment. And so thank you for all the work you do. I understand. You guys give up a lot of your weekends over the summer to do it, and I appreciate that. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate those other things as well. All right, well now move on to the rest reports. We'll begin this evening with our finance director, Mr. Regus.
Just one item for me, other than the legislation that we covered earlier, is that the Modern State has informed me that they will be bidding out our audit for fiscal years 2022 through 2026. And the reason for that is that they're taking back a lot of other audits that are larger than ours, and for their book about business, they deem our audit that they're fine with bidding us out. Mostly as a result of how well it went this past year, so they have no problems bidding us out. So I'll keep council updated as I find out more information as far as who's awarded the bid and for the amount that they're awarded for. That's all I have to report today.
May I be recognized? I don't think we ever got an update of exactly how we fared with all the refunds that, from Rita, you know, regarding the whole work-at-home thing.
Okay.
I mean, you don't have to do it right now, but if you could...
I have an amount. It's approximately $100,000 at this point, from my memory serves me right, correct. They're still processing it. It's not final. But that's the most updated amount that I have.
Okay, so it wasn't as bad as it could have been?
It's not, but there, it's still some left to be determined as far as, since they're not finished processing it.
Okay, do we know what, when they'll be finished?
I do not, no.
Okay.
I don't have a timeline.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And one final report from my directors, Mr. Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just on that topic, you know, Tom said that we don't understand when that timeline is. But just understand that there's pending legislation still on that previous year. So we are keeping that, a close eye on that. And Amy, who is now in charge of Rita, basically said, you know, cities should be really watching the, not only the withholding, but the net profit. And I urged everyone when I spoke about this before. We had a huge net profit last year. This is how the businesses are parking money. And I think I put this in an update to you guys, so that's one thing. And if you look at the withholdings for the cities, we are one of the losers right now. We're trending down about 8%, 8.9% versus some cities. Newburgh Heights is seeing a 50% increase, Rocky River, Bay Village. I think they're in the 20s. So we are one of the losers. I say that not to make anybody afraid, but to understand, you know, we are a big, very, we have a heavy commercial sector. But we do believe that our residents, or not residents, our businesses are taking out the income taxes the crackaway, and that's what's contributing to that with Key Bank, Medical Mutual. So we're, we hope this is what we're seeing, and this is what our kind of trend is, and we'll kind of close that gap soon.
Yeah, you're good. Right. Thank you, Mr. Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In committee of the whole tonight, Councilman Pucci asked a question about whether or not Resolution 2022-34, which is on first reading this evening, and would permit the city to pay wages, according to a wage reopener, to our ASPM employees, whether that legislation has to be adopted on fewer than three readings. And I looked that up in the meantime and determined that the statute permits you a period of 30 days within which to make a decision on the legislation. So it does not need to be passed on first or even second reading. You could, you could pass the measure on third reading and still be within the 30-day window. It segues nicely into a quick explanation, which I thought would be appropriate on the term of art emergency when we talk about legislation. A resident brought that up tonight. And I know a couple of councilmen have addressed that particular issue, that particular legislation, and I won't do that. But I thought it would be appropriate just to explain quickly that that word is used all across northeast Ohio, and in fact, all over Ohio, to mean legislation that is meant to go into effect earlier than the 30-day window of time after it's passed. So it has to do with what our charter says about when legislation goes into effect. Oftentimes, the rest of the world cannot do business at the pace of government. And our government obligates us normally to wait 30 days before a piece of legislation that is something that authorizes the enforcement of a contract or a new ordinance that goes into effect. Our charter ordinarily obligates us to wait 30 days before that legislation actually takes effect. When you adopt quote-unquote "emergency" legislation, it doesn't and shouldn't evoke a scene of people running out of a burning building. It just means that the legislation is meant to go into effect fewer than 30 days after it passes. That's what "emergency" means when we pass legislation by emergency. I've been in local government and on city council since 2005 and have experienced, on the receiving end of those kinds of questions, why is that an emergency? Why is something maybe as innocuous as whether to permit ice cream vendors to play their music while they're operating their trucks considered an emergency? It's not an emergency. It's just meant to go into effect in fewer than 30 days after its passage. And so the normal term that we think of when we use that word "emergency" doesn't really apply to legislation. Of course, there are more emergent situations than others, and we have to make that determination as to what we need to be effective sooner than 30 days. That's why it requires a supermajority vote of city council when something is meant to go into effect sooner than 30 days. And our charter provides that bulwark against city council acting too hastily. So it obligates a supermajority vote. And there's one more thing. You also have the ability to suspend the rules requiring a full three readings of legislation. That's the second way you can speed up legislation so that the pace of government matches the pace of the rest of the world. When you adopt legislation on, say, first or second reading, that means that you are not waiting the full three readings in order to make that legislation, in order to pass that legislation. It doesn't have to do with the emergency effectiveness. It has to do with when you pass the legislation. That vote also, to suspend the rules and permit legislation to be passed on fewer than three readings, requires a supermajority vote of city council. It's another safeguard against council acting too hastily. Oftentimes, it's used for things where the administration asks for your passage early so that we can enforce and execute a contract, something that's required, some repair that's needed, for example. And oftentimes, those pieces of legislation are very innocuous, and they really don't, they're not going to have a lasting impact on your average citizen in Brooklyn. And so the charter gives you the authority to take that, take that supermajority vote and adopt something on fewer than three readings. Those are the two ways, emergency legislation and legislation adopted on fewer than three readings, where things can happen faster than the normal course of government business. I thought I'd just point that out. Certainly, it's not an offensive proposition when a citizen raises the question, why would you call that an emergency? But it bears some explanation. Sorry to add some additional time to your meeting tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Appreciate the explanation. All right, well now move on to legislation for this evening. We did have three notifications. I already mentioned them in my report, but I will briefly again. So $150,000 from ARPA grant, a grant received from the Cuyahoga County for the City Center project. $181,471 for the State of Ohio Violent Crime Reduction Program from the Police Department. And $675.25 grant from the State of Ohio for Fire Department medical equipment. The next two items, ordinance 2022-16 and 17, actually, what Mr. Butler is talking about, are on the agenda for through reading and adoption. But I am going to place, make a motion that we place them on second reading as we just had the public hearing tonight. So I'd like to give the public time if they have any questions. So ordinance 2022-16, I'll make a motion that we place on second reading.
Second.
For second reading, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Groddick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
And then the second one is ordinance 2022-17. This is to establish the Optin Natural Gas Program. The sister ordinance is 2022-16. I'll make a motion that we place this on second reading as well.
Second.
For second reading, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Groddick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-28 is on first reading, but hope to pass by suspension of the rules. This extends a moratorium imposed by Resolution 2022-6 on the acceptance and processing, granting of applications for zoning, occupancy, indoor building permit approvals for small box discount stores and the issuance of such approvals in the city of Brooklyn for a period of 180 days and declaring emergency.
Introduced by all to suspend the rules. Second.
To suspend the rules, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Groddick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
To adopt, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Groddick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-29 on first reading, but hope to pass by suspension of the rules. This establishing the fee for an assessment improvement lien certification related to the parcels within the city of Brooklyn. As was discussed in my report on committee of the whole, this increases the current fee from $5 to $25, and also would have an hourly fee over an hour of $25 per hour.
Introduced by all to suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Groddick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
To adopt, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Groddick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-30 is on first reading, but also hope to pass by suspension of the rules. This requests the county fiscal officer to advance the city of Brooklyn's taxes from the proceeds of 2022 tax levies pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 321.34.
Introduced by all to suspend the rules. Second.
To suspend the rules, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Groddick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
To adopt, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Groddick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-31 is on first reading, establishing a donation box impound fee. This fee would be, will be $17 if it is adopted on second or third reading, per day. Resolution 2022-32 is on first reading, but hope to pass by suspension of the rules, accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county fiscal officer.
Introduced by all to suspend the rules. Second.
To suspend the rules, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Groddick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
To adopt, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Groddick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-33 is on first reading, approving and adopting the Cuyahoga County 2022 to 2027 All Hazards Mitigation Plan. Also on first reading is Resolution 2022-34, authorizing the mayor of the city of Brooklyn to pay a 2023 wages in accordance with the Wage Reopener Language in the 2021 to 2023 collective bargaining agreement with the ASPM Ohio Council 8, AFL-CIO Local 3218 clerical employees. Resolution 2022-35 is on first reading, but hope to pass by suspension of the rules. This is authorizing the agreement with the K Company for the emergency repairs of the Recreation Center Rank Dehumidification Unit in an amount not to exceed $50,820.85.
Introduced by all to suspend the rules. Second.
To suspend the rules, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Groddick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
To adopt, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Groddick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-36 is on first reading, but hope to pass by suspension of the rules. This is amending Resolution 2022-26, approving of a construction budget and authorizing execution of a guaranteed minimum price amendment for the City Center project, as I discussed in the committee of the whole. This is an increase due to a couple of changes. One is for some milling work that needs to be done, and also some additional security items in regards to doors are for the City Center project.
Introduced by all to suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules, Erin Barowski.
Yes.